Welcome to another edition of the Moshe Live, everybody. I hope everybody's having a happy new year and I'm looking forward to picking off a new year of the show and I've got a great guest for our first show of 2019. Um, you know, I'm real proud to live here in Huntsville and my law firm practices here in Huntsville and we have a great city and we have a lot of great local leaders that make our city great along with the great people that make up our community. And today we've got one of our great local leaders here is our guest today. Our guest today is Mark Russell. He's the former president of the Huntsville City Council. Marcus also been very actively involved in our community and involved in youth sports and refereeing sports, the Huntsville Sports Commission. And a lot of other things that we're going to talk a lot about the city, the growth of the city on this time in the city council, a lot about his activities and things that he's volunteering very passionate about. I think everybody's going to really enjoy getting to know Mark and hear more about his story. So without further ado, Mark, I want to kick it off and formally introduce you. Mark was born in Texas and then moved to Massachusetts at an early age, but really came to Huntsville, I think he said in fifth grade, both showed started Mark and then graduated from Huntsville High School. He's a graduate of Auburn University. Mark served for 16 years on the Huntsville City Council. And I think stepped down and decided not to run again in his last day was was back in November of 2018. Um, he's also been very active in the local boys and girls club here in Huntsville. He's been very active in the fellowship of Christian athletes here in the Huntsville area. And I think Mark told me that he is for over 20 years now, he's refereed high school football and has also been refereeing baseball and it's really gotten into refing lacrosse lately. So. A lot of great things that Mark's doing and then he's married and he's got kids. So he's a busy man and Mark, I really appreciate your time today. How are things going in the new year for you?
Mo, everything's going great. I'm so thrilled to be here with you. I love your show. It's great to be here. Great to be here at the Martin and Beeson building, wonderful building in downtown Huntsville. Mac and Doug Martinson, I grew up with them and they're my lawyers and uh being here.
Well, we appreciate the friendship that we've got with you, with our firm and getting to know you and um. And I'm really excited to kind of chit chat with you. So folks, if you're, if you're tuning into the show here and you're watching the show live or recorded, please share out the show so we can kind of spread some of the great things that that we're going to be talking about with Huntsville, the city of Huntsville and the growth of Huntsville. And some of the great things that we're going to talk about with some youth sports and refereeing and things that are going on too, that I think some stories that I think Mark made sure that a lot of people would really enjoy hearing and doing. And if you're watching us live, please jump in. I'm going to be watching the feed over here on the screen. If you've got questions, jump in and I'll be glad to try to get to them and if we can get some feedback, if you just want to say hello, just give us a shout out. You know, Mark, I guess where I'd start was, you know, introducing you and getting to know you a little bit through Doug and Mac is that. Now you're so involved. I mean, you know, civic involvement with servant, servant, our city with all the boards and the nonprofits and things that you're getting. Where does your passion for for your civic engagement and giving back and interest in for city government, where'd that come from?
Well, it all started with children. I wanted to make sure all children in our, in our community had an opportunity to be successful. That's my children, your children, all the children at the Boys and Girls Club. I thought there was a need for somebody to get involved with that. That was my interest. That was my passion. And that's what led me to being involved in city government.
Yeah. Well, and you know, it's, it takes us, you know, a special person to do that. I mean, it's, it's a big commitment. You know, I know that the, the, the things that I'm blessed to be involved with, with March Dimes and with. With other things that my wife's school is as a public school teacher, getting involved in volunteering and being on PTA boards. It takes away from your family too, but I think it helps make the community a better place, which makes a better place to raise your family. And I think that's, that's really important and it's a struggle. And um, so I, I think it's a great that you've done that. And I think our community has reaped the benefits from it.
Yeah. And that's part of the reason I ran, Mo. I was involved in a leadership class Huntsville Madison County Leadership Class at a young age in my early thirties. And we went to a city council meeting and they were arguing about soccer fields and they really didn't get it. They didn't understand why we needed soccer fields. They didn't have soccer fields when their kids grew up. Why did they need them now? They didn't have two gyms at a high school. Why do they need two gyms? One's perfectly fine. They didn't understand women's sports was coming. There were some other issues. I wanted this to be a town where our children could come back and work if they wanted to, that they were excited about moving back here. And so I was telling all my friends, hey, one of us needs to run. We need to get a, some diversity on the board as far as age and that's on the council. And we all talked about it. Well, then a few years went by and one of them called me and said, hey, you're just going to be just like the rest of them. You're not, you're going to wait until you have time to do it and you're going to be old and retired and then you're going to run for city council. And I thought you're right. And so I ran, I was roughly 38 years old when I ran and didn't have the time for it. Had two children, you know, busy, involved in a lot of stuff. But I thought it was important and I'm glad I did. And I still think it's important that we get all kinds of people involved in our local government.
Yeah, I think, I think our government should be made up, kind of mirror our community and young and old and diversity. And I think that's, that's a great thing to do. And that kind of does tell us right where I wanted to talk, you know, I've been here, my family and I have been in Huntsville for 10 years now. And in the 10 years we've been here, Mark, dramatic changes have occurred. And I know in the few years before we, we moved here, we love it here. Um, you know, the 16 years that you've been on the board, the city has grown, you know, in so many areas. Um, and with that growth comes a lot of opportunity, but also comes a lot of challenges. And I'd be curious, just kind of as you look back over the last 16 years on, on the city council, what do you think were some of the, the biggest challenges you and the city council and the city has faced? You know, growing to where we are now with the Brax and with, with new corporations like Toyota Mazda coming here and other corporations that have moved here and the great things we've got going on in our community.
Well, we've certainly been blessed with great leadership over the time that I was involved. Mayor Spencer, Mayor Battle were both excellent. Chairman Gillespie, Chairman Strong did a great job. We've had good leaders in Madison. The team's been very good to work with. One of the biggest challenges and biggest challenges for almost everyone in their companies is, is financial challenges. The city worked really hard to get a triple A bond rating. And we've had that triple A bond rating in the last 10 years. So all of Mayor Battle's term, it was set up by Mayor Spencer and her staff. And then Mayor Battle has kept it going. So we've had 10 years of triple A bond rating and that allows the city to do a lot of good things that, that other cities can't.
Yeah, yeah. Well, um, I want to say hello real quick to Bernard Nonberg, Gloria Bond, there's Ben Cobb. Hey Ben, how you doing bud? And appreciate you guys joining us today. If you've got questions or comments, please chime in and let us know. You know, is there anything that during the last 16 years that you really wanted to accomplish or that you thought that the city needed that you were really proud that during your term that you guys were able to accomplish as a city council and as a city government?
Yes, there's so many things over 16 years, but uh, one of the first things I worked on when I was elected was a no smoking ordinance. If you can believe it, at that time, 16 years ago, we had that invisible barrier in a restaurant. Where one side of the restaurant was no smoking, one side was smoking and somehow that barrier protected the no smokers from the smoke and people believed it. And I brought up, I tried to make Huntsville completely smoke free, worked real hard on it, took a lot of heat. It certainly welcomed me to politics, the both the good and the bad part of it. That's when I follow, found out about caller ID and that's when I found out about getting rid of the home phone, that kind of thing. Way back before cell phones, Mo. And uh, but that was one of the proudest accomplishments was going ahead and doing that and taking the heat and getting it done. And now when I talk to like kids at high school, they just can't even believe that you used to be able to smoke in a, a public place.
That, that is crazy, you know, and I'm old enough to remember that and do, but you know, I hadn't really thought about it in a couple of years or, you know, you think about it, you get on an older plane and you still see the welded ashtray thing and it just, if you got on a plane and somebody's smoking, I, I don't, you know, that, that just totally. I start coughing and I get kind of allergic to it. So, but you know, that's a, but for a city and a lot of businesses, restaurants and bars, I'm sure that was a scary change and something that you got a lot of pushback from.
Sure. It definitely was scary for local businesses, but we worked together. We, we had a long year studying it, a lot of discussion and we did the right thing and we did the best we could. And, and I think everybody would agree that it's been a tremendous success for Huntsville. We were on the cutting edge in Alabama anyway of doing that. It was being done in many other states, but you Alabama, we're normally a little bit behind. And so it worked and people were happy with it, but I, that was kind of my welcome to politics, both good and bad. I remember doing that thinking, if I can just make it through this and get to the other side.
Well, and when you step out into a controversial issue like that and kind of say, well, I'm here to make a difference and I'm here to do what I think is best for my city and my district. Then you need to step out and do it. And, but that's easier said than done because especially on a topic like that, you know that that's going to be controversial and you're going to take some heat and there's going to be people, they're going to push back. And when reelection time comes up, that, you know, that's going to take pushback and do too. So.
Yeah, yeah. It's, it's definitely an issue. You make some enemies on, but I made more friends and I thought, I thought it was the right thing to do and it worked well. One of the other issues we worked on, I worked on with Doug Martinson here at Martinson Beeson was getting schools built in the city of Huntsville. We were struggling in 2002 with school buildings, not initially with our schools. Our schools were producing great students and great kids. They were doing wonderful things. But our buildings were really, really in bad shape and it was starting to cause people not to choose the city of Huntsville to live here. They would, they would move into the area, but not the city of Huntsville. Huntsville High was really in bad shape. We were down to about 800 students. Blossomwood was in bad shape. Lee was awful. It went on and on and on. And with Doug Martinson, we collaborated, worked together and we were able to build lots of schools in the city of Huntsville over the 16 years. And we have a new Huntsville High. We had a new Lee High School. We've got a new Grissom, a, a new Blossomwood, a new Hampton Cove middle, a new Goldsmith Shiftman. We've done a lot of new Whitesburg. We did a lot in this area for schools.
Well, and that's, that's the backbone of really of any community and you know, and I've been fortunate enough to have other guests on the show of from, from Devon Keith to Mayor Finley out in Madison and Robbie Parker, the superintendent at Madison. If you're going to build a successful city and had to attract people, not only do you need industry and jobs for people, but to attract those industries, you've got to have good quality schools with good. Foundations for them and good buildings and infrastructure in the schools. So companies will want to move here because they, they want to know that the workforce is going to come here and come in and can move in. And, and I think, I think the city of Huntsville, I get it through your leadership and others has, has seen that and, and that's, that's great because I don't know that all the industries and things that we've got going would be coming to fruition if that wasn't the case.
Yeah, they, they wouldn't be. And we were surprised at how important curb appeal was to them moving. So the school buildings, not only do they have to be, we have to have great teachers and produce good students. We also have to have functional buildings.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I know that, that's, you know, the, the schools now are so expensive to build and doing that. And so trying to raise, raise the capital to do it, it just blows my mind to hear, but, but. There's so many things now that go on in our schools in terms of all the courses and things that are offered that are tremendous. That weren't offered when I was in school 20 plus years ago, but you got to have space and it costs money to build the, the classrooms and the things that they need to have all the various resources and opportunities and classes that they need. Real quick, I want to thank Brian O'Connor, Jennifer Goff and Mitch Jackson for, for joining us. Um. You know, I guess Mark, one thing, you know, folks, if you're, if you're kind of tuning in, we're talking to um. Mark Russell, who's the former president of Huntsville City Council and involved in a lot of activities here over the years in Huntsville. And right now we're, we're kind of talking about the, the growth of the city and his tenure on the city council over the last 16 years. And you know, folks, we have a tremendous tech industry here. We have more engineers, I think per capita than any other city in the country. We have a military presence with Redstone Arsenal, but you know, then we've had, you know, great companies like Toyota Mazda announcing that the huge plant that's coming here, that's already started construction. And then. Here in downtown, we've had a total since I've been here in the last several years, the, the city leadership and downtown Huntsville Inc. and others have a really revitalization. I mean, they're building a humongous hotel just half a block from here now. They already started demolishing the other buildings. Where do you see Huntsville going in the next 20 to 30 years, Mark? What, what, what do you see? Do you see us still being kind of a midsize, a, a, a big, small town? Or do you think we're going to grow into something more like a Nashville of that size town?
I don't think we'll make Nashville, but we're going to be a big, small town. We have smart people and smart people always succeed. It's just always the way it's going to be. We have engineers, we have a great quality of life. We're trying to, the government staying ahead of the infrastructure, like in a lot of cities, the infrastructure is way behind the population. But here, I mean, we consider traffic, you know, having to wait for 30 seconds at a light. But if you go to Nashville or Washington DC or a lot of the places where we compete with, their traffic's a lot different than ours. And so we're keeping up with infrastructure that the city's doing a good job. Now, there's been many times where I wanted to spend that money on a ballpark or. A John Hunt Park or something else. And I can remember Mayor Spencer telling me, Mark, do you want your park or do you want roads? And then I remembered, well, we've got to have roads. And so I think this, that's what you were asking about the challenges city faces and, and those are always, you know, keeping the priorities ahead in the right place, you know, building infrastructure, trying to stay ahead of the population growth. Uh, but, but providing a good quality of life while you're doing it.
Yeah. And, and that's, that's a difficult, it's a difficult thing is for today, immediate future, you know, something like a ballpark or something, or do we need to look to the, to the long-term future of, of the infrastructure and do? And I know that a lot of that's going on now. I know we've got some road construction that some people are probably growing pains now that a lot of people in our local community are not, not, not liking too much, but I laugh because I know when I'm, I live, I, I live out in East Limestone and, and, and. You meet in and Doug and Mac and all the guys think I'm crazy because you know, drive in like 18 miles and it's like this big commute, but I, I drove for two and a half years from Tuscaloosa to Birmingham every day. And I'm like, man, there's no traffic here. There's none. I mean, one, one out of every six weeks I might hit traffic going home if there's an accident or something, but it's, it's not, you're right. We're very fortunate to have, I think Huntsville is such a great city and our size is so great, Mark, because we have all the things recreational wise that you want to do. We have. College sports that are great going on. We have minor league sports that are here and coming here. We've got the BBC with great acts like Seinfeld that comes here. But we've got the great quality of life that, that, that you want in a smaller town. So I think, really think we've got the best to go for.
Right, right. We can go to our kid, children's Little League game after work. We don't have to worry about, you know, traffic stopping us from doing it. And that's one of the great joys of my life was being able to participate in all my children's activities and, and work a normal life. So one of the things for less, like old Huntsville guys, like I, I live roughly downtown, work downtown and downtown. So I'm out of the bubble. So I don't know about the traffic on the way to East Limestone. It probably is real traffic to me.
Well, I'm going to be behind the scenes here, folks. Mark, Mark rode his bike to the interview today. So I mean, he is, he is, he is truly, you know, downtown and getting around. And that's what's one of the great things about Huntsville downtown. And so. Is you can still do that. And I came downtown the other, other day and it was great just to see people walking and doing it, more foot traffic and people riding bikes and doing it. And it's really, I think the last five to seven years, it's been great to see how we've revitalized downtown. And I think it's going to get even better from what I hear is coming and what we already know is coming.
Yeah, it's a beautiful natural downtown. We've got the Big Spring. We've got a great square. So some of the issues when I was elected in 2002, we didn't have a downtown hotel, believe it or not. Especially with all the construction going on now and the city really worked hard to get the embassy suites here. And I can't tell you how, how hard we worked and how much. Effort like I put in to want that hotel there. We knew we had to have that hotel to attract conventions and to attract the kind of downtown. And it was the catalyst of getting this thing started. And now 16 years later, we're starting to see the fruits of all that work with, with several hotels going in. And I, and I, and I have to mention a lot of the private contributions, the Probst family gave $5 million to the Civic Center. The Smith family gave $3 million to Concert Hall. Those were huge gifts at the time. They're always going to be huge gifts, but they really, really, really started downtown going in the right direction.
Yeah. And those are tremendous facilities for, of any size city, but especially a, a mid-sized city like us, Mark C. Smith Concert Hall and Probst Arena are just great facilities to host events and sporting events and other things. And that's a good segue into what I wanted to kind of, to kind of touch on next was, you know, Mark, um. I know you've been involved, as I mentioned at the beginning of the show, for those just turning in, Mark's been involved for over 20 years as a high school football referee and refing other high school sports. And um, as somebody who loves sports, I told you I was at a high school basketball game last night and go to a lot of college games, play college football and just love sports. But I've got to wonder, right? So every time I go to a sporting event, every time I was involved in a sporting event, everybody, the coaches, the fans, the players, man, we all had one passion. We didn't like the ref. You're never getting any glory. What, what drove you to want to be a ref? What, 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 what kind of pulled you into it?
Well, I really wanted to be around the kids. I thought it was a good opportunity to be around the kids. I had two daughters. Uh, they were into dance and they played some softball, but they really didn't want to be athletes. And, and officiating was a way that I could be around the kids and be involved in sports. And they're, like you said, there's nothing like a Friday night football game. I don't care where you are. Friday night football game in the South is awesome. It builds community, the bands, the cheerleaders, the dance teams, all the parents. It's just so much fun. And so I, I wanted to be around that. I'm not saying I, right at the beginning, I was wondering if I had the person, personality for it because I didn't like to be criticized at the time. I had pretty thin skin. But that, that refereeing taught me thick skin. It taught me how to make decisions, how to have people around me that were not pleased with me at the, at any given time. And that actually served me well for city council.
Yeah, I was going to say, you know, speaking, speaking of having a lot of people that a lot of times they don't give you a call unless there's something wrong. Um, and that's probably on the city council or they think you made a, made the wrong call. I'm sure they did give you some thick skin. I'm sure you probably wanted to uh, have your flag and yellow flag and, and uh, wear your referee shirt and your whistle sometimes at some of the council meetings.
Yeah, a lot of my colleagues would say, doesn't that upset you? And I was like, you know, I just don't, don't think of it that way. When the coach is yelling at me, I just think, well, I did my best or I tried or I was right, you know, or here's the rule. And that's why I thought about it as city council. It takes a lot to get to me. And so if you've got me upset, you've done a great job.
Well, I mean, they do. And, but, but I can imagine, you know, that, that, you know, I've been fortunate enough to watch and be participate. And, and some of the, the greatest sporting events that I've seen are high school football games or been a part of and amazing stories. And I'm sure you've been a part of those. And I think you shared with me that you've had the, the, the pleasure to, the benefit to referee several high school state championship games and part of other playoff games. Anything that, that sticks out, is there a game that you witnessed or a play that you would, a player that you witnessed that you just said, oh my gosh, I can't believe that I just was a part of that and just witnessed that. Anything that sticks out over the last 20 years, one or two experiences?
Yeah, and certainly we've had a lot of great athletes in the city of Huntsville. One at Bob Jones, Reggie Ragland was a joy to watch on the football field. He was wonderful. The ones that stick out to me were Cornell Williams at Etowah. I did an Etowah game one year and guy, uh. When you talk about speed, it was just a different gear. And that's generally the type players we're talking about. They're going, going on to the pros. They have a different speed when there's somebody's chasing them. And it's just, it's, it's unlike anything you see on a normal, in a normal football game. And so that's really sets them apart. They're all big. They're all fast. They're all pretty good. But there's something about those special guys. They have an extra gear. Justin Ross played at Phoenix City was the star the other night for Clemson against Alabama, the receiver number eight. When he played, he played for Central Phoenix City, that kid can play and he can fly and he's, he's, he's a man child out there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. For those who don't know, certainly everybody knows who Justin Ross is now, especially if you're an Alabama fans right now.
I may not want to know who he is, but you know.
Yeah, you missed out on it, but, but Cardinal Cadillac Williams was, was a tremendous player for Auburn and part of the, I think the, the 2000, I think he may have been on that 2004 undefeated team. And he had a pretty good stint in, in the NFL as well. Um, but you know, Mark, I guess your passion for sports, I know that, that is a part of, of that and giving back to the community. You've worked with the Huntsville Sports Commission. Can you kind of tell us what the commission is and what its role and mission is and why you think it's so important to our community?
Yeah, sure. And I believe in sports and I believe sports builds community. So I'm a real proponent of, of all sports. I think kids should be playing sports. There's so many life lessons you learn from them. And I think schools should be sponsoring sports. It's a great way to educate the children. And so the Huntsville Sports Commission is authority here in town. And, and our job is really to bring tournaments into Huntsville and to provide a quality of life for our citizens. We're sort of like the Convention and Visitors Bureau of Sports. Uh, so we host Alabama High School Athletics Association Soccer Championship at John Hunt Park. We host the wrestling tournament at the Von Braun Center. It'll be coming up in February. Recently, we started doing the Rocket City Classic where Alabama men's basketball comes up here. They've come up here three years in a row, had a great night at the Von Braun Center. Real proud of that event. It's kind of what we're trying to work on downtown with downtown Huntsville Inc., the Von Braun Center, really bring big events here downtown and let our community enjoy them. And we got a lot of good buzz from having Alabama basketball here the last three years. People enjoy that night. I've seen you there on the, you, you've got the Laker seats, very impressed. Kids like it. It's fun to be around Alabama basketball gets out in the community. They went to the Boys and Girls Club several years. They go to our schools. They read this year at Whitesburg Elementary. And, and the kids loved them. And, and that's a once in a lifetime experience for those children at Whitesburg, you know, to get to see these superstars come back and read to them a book. And it's really a good message. So. The sports commission, we do things like that. I, I, like I said, I'm a big believer in sports. I'm a big believer in sports tourism. Uh, we've all, I don't know if you've had this yet, Mo, if your kids are playing travel ball or whatever.
We're not.
Other cities. Yeah, you spend a lot of time in other cities at their parks, at their hotels, spending a lot of your money, you know, going out to eat and you really have no choice. It's what you do. And we want to be, get part of that money and be part of the, the, the part of the group of cities that hosts a lot of tournaments. And we have some great facilities here that I think we can do that in or do more of it. Our, our cross-country course, it's going to be at the old Muni Golf Course. It's going to be the best in the Southeast, maybe one of the best in the nation. We'll be able to hold all kinds of tournaments there and people will be in town eating at our restaurants, staying at our hotels, using that. John Hunt Park will continue to expand. We'll have more and more tournaments there. We've got other facilities all over the town that we can use to bring, bring tournaments in. You see the turf fields near Milton Frank. There's four AstroTurf fields being built. That will help us with soccer tournaments, lacrosse tournaments, things like that. So. We're going to be a sports town. We, we're a great place for it. We have affordable hotels. We have affordable restaurants, lots of things to do for families, Space and Rocket Center, Big Spring Park. So you'll watch that sports tourism will boom here.
I think that's great. And I agree totally from my experiences, involvement in sports and knowing a lot of parents, the friends that have kids that are into travel ball and doing it. We're, we're right on the cusp of doing that. That, that it's true and that, and that people are looking for places to hold tournaments and do. And Huntsville has so many things to offer and it's easy to get here from a lot of different areas around the state, the Southeast with, with, and we're now, especially with all the hotels that are coming downtown too. We're going to have plenty of places to stay, plenty of places to eat, plenty of things to do. Then I think too, that when they come, that they're, even if they don't get to do everything, they may get just enough taste of Huntsville. That they might want to come back and go to the Space and Rocket Center, come back and experience something else. Or when they hear about the Rocket City Classic, they, well, that, we've enjoyed our time in Huntsville. Let's go back. Let's go that weekend that that game's going to be in town. Go watch that. And that is, by the way, that is awesome. Why not? Thoroughly enjoy that. And we do, we're very blessed to have Lakers teacher on the floor. And it's amazing at how big those, those athletes are for both those basketball teams. There's just some big dudes that they can run really fast. Um, but before, I want to be mindful of your time as we're getting, we're getting on to 30 minutes here. Last thing I kind of want to touch on, you know, is, is kind of have you shared, shared that the experience that you had back in August of, of 2017 where. You were reffing a, a game at Madison Academy and you had a heart attack. And I know that that has, uh, from, from what I've read and what I've, you've shared with me and what Doug shared with me, that that had really certainly impacted your life. Can you kind of give us the, the Cliff Notes version of what happened that night?
Sure, sure. So I, I was reffing a game like I, like I always do and uh. I guess wasn't feeling so good and was trying to make it to halftime. And at the end of the first quarter, we had changed quarters. I'd run a little bit. They had a missed field goal. I'd run 30, 40 more yards and then was standing at the 20 yard line and uh. Basically, I guess you'd call it fainted and just went down. And uh, just by the grace of God and luck, uh, there was a registered nurse, that's a cardiac care nurse was standing uh, within five feet of me taking pictures for the Madison County Football Team. She realized what my symptoms were and that was that I fell face first and didn't put my hands out and knew that it wasn't a heat related or something like that. And immediately started pumping my chest and helping me. Also by the grace of God, the HEMZI ambulance guys were six feet behind me with stretcher and a defibrillator on top of the stretcher. And so the team of Palet Berryman, the nurse and the uh. Anaz and the HEMZI crew, they were able with some help from doctors. It was always good to have two private schools out there on the field. There were lots of doctors around. I probably had the best medical care in Huntsville that night. And they were able to uh. Put the defibrillator on me and shot me back to life. They said it took two shocks and I came back to life and it was, uh, it wasn't scary for me. I really didn't know what happened. You know, I was in the ambulance. I thought I had gotten sick. I didn't realize I'd had a heart attack. But I've talked to a lot of members or people in the crowd and I realized what an effect that would have on them to see somebody basically die and come back to life. And so. We think we were, I was out five to eight minutes. Nobody's really sure, you know, and they say in the fog of the war. And so we think we were, I was out five to eight minutes. Nobody's really sure, you know, they say in the fog of the war, nobody really knows what goes on. And so I don't know what happened those, those five minutes or so, uh, but they've told me that. Got to Huntsville Hospital. We're so lucky, Mo, to have a great trauma center like Huntsville Hospital here. They have everything you need. Uh, if I had been at some of the places we referee and you're from a one A school, you can imagine, probably wouldn't have turned out that well. Uh, but the way with everybody there on the field, getting to Huntsville Hospital real quick, I was fine. You know, I got a scent that night and, and really, uh, was feeling good at, you know, maybe midnight that night, absolutely no problems. But some of the things that I worried about, my wife was out of town. We had some issues, you know, the funny issues with the hospital, they'll take a long time to explain. Not having an insurance card because the referees don't carry their insurance card in their pocket. And so that's, that's a problem for us. And I got asked that, I got asked that question maybe a hundred times. Do you have your insurance card? And I was like, no. And couldn't give it because my wife wasn't there. And so, uh, but anyway, that night I, I thought like, I was laying there in bed. I said, what if this had been the, what if I died that, you know, what would have happened? My wife was out of town. I couldn't remember if I told her I loved her that day. You know, what, what, what was the last words I said to my mother? What, when was the last time I talked to my adult children, you know, who don't live here? You know, and all that stuff was going through me. How did I leave the house? How did I leave my desk at the office? You know, hey, that could have been it, you know, am I good with all my friends? Have I told them how much I appreciate them? You know, things like that, all these personal relationships. And it really, it really made me think about living ready. And it's not just, uh, in your business, you know, you might say living ready is having a will or, you know, having a burial plot. And I had all that stuff. I wasn't concerned about that. I was concerned about what the, what my wife would think, what, what the kids' last memory was. Did the guy at work, did I not call him back? You know, things like that. And, uh, really, really made me focus on living ready, that life's pretty simple. I, I don't care about all the stuff anymore. Really care about relationships and care about, uh, really at the moment. And, and maybe that's just me because of what happened to me, but I, I think that's, I, I'm maybe a better way to live. And again, I'm older, you know, been through the kids have gone. I don't need a lot of the material things that I used to need. But, uh, I could just tell you from that experience that that's what I was thinking is, you know, what did I tell these people daily? Do I need to, to tell somebody? You know, that I love them, that I appreciate them or thank you. And I thank a lot more people. I take a lot more time. I listen a lot better, uh, things like that, because that's what's important.
I agree. And you know, life sometimes is, is a funny teacher and, and, and it teaches us things. And I know my life experiences has taught me that too, with losing my son. And it just shapes you. You see things from a different lens that you, maybe you didn't see it. And certainly we, we all react to different things, different ways, but I think I love what you said there. Tell me that again, more living life ready. What was your, what was your friend you had?
I've been saying live, live ready is what I learned.
Live ready.
Yeah. I, I think of that all the time now is like, what if it was today? What if it's like when I'm riding my bike back from your office? Am I ready? You know, it's good. Yeah. Yeah. Well, again, I sure didn't think it was going to be that night reffing a football game.
Yeah.
I've roughed thousands of football games. Why that night? I don't know. Why were the people there? You're not in charge of this.
No, you're a hundred percent right. And, and, and I'm very blessed to represent a lot of people over the last almost 16 years now. And I do mainly injury work and, and most of everybody that I represent, they didn't know that, that they were fixed to be involved in traumatic accidents. You know, we're live life ready, you know, and do it. The other thing I wanted to point out, I didn't even thought about that, when you said that, it's something that we just did here that I want to encourage everybody out there to do. And I'm sure you'll jump on with me, is that we, we did a couple of months ago, folks here at the office, we had, uh, fire department come in and offer CPR and defibrillator training to, to everybody at the office and wanted to say something that I hadn't done in years, been CPR certified, but I got certified. And, and I hope I never have to use it. But as Mark said, he just very fortunate and blessed to be at the right place at the right time with other people. But if you're not CPR certified, it, it's an hour and a half, 20 bucks, give or take, give or take. It's nothing out of your time that, that you could save a, a stranger or most of your family or friend's life. And you're, so go out there and get that done. I think that's real important. And I think you, you know, you might could be somebody's hero like these folks were for Mark.
Yes. Certainly I've done that since then and I don't want to be the guy standing around watching. I'm going to help if, if it happens to somebody in front of me. There may be people that can help better and I'll certainly give it up to them. But I'm not going to stand there and watch, watch it happen.
A hundred percent great. And again, I hope I never have to use it, but I, I'm not going to stand on the sidelines if somebody needs help. I want, I want to know that I'm educated to know how to do it and go try to help if I can. But I'm hoping there's a cardiac nurse somewhere around like there was for you. But Mark, I want to thank you so much for your time today. I want to thank you for your service to our community and, 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 uh, really keep plugging away with the Huntsville Sports Commission and, and, and reffing these games and doing, because we're, we're real real fortunate to have you in the community doing these great things, giving back. And, and we need more people that are willing to step up and do that. Then folks, thanks for joining in. Again, remember, please like and share the video so we can read the great things that we talked about here, uh, about the growth of the city and some of the great things about the Huntsville Sports Commission and, and sports, uh, things that are going on in our city and the things that we're hoping to bring here. Mark, again, thanks for your time today.
Thank you.
Thank you.